His old welding helmet and that that was um kinda scary compared to what they are today.
Oh yeah.
Where's Adam? We're not gonna have this meeting.
Uh-uh, yeah, we need to go home. And nobody's phoning in?
No. Are you texting or don't? I can't text.
Oh, I'm down, no.
So my calendar had this meeting for both three P M. and four P M.
I'm sorry.
I had to check.
Hello.
Hello there. Thank you. Anywhere. I usually sit here.
Okay. Usually sit here?
Yeah.
Do you want this uh shut? Me?
Good day to you all. Do you want that door shut? Okay, I got it.
We're live, but I need to. I don't know how to pause this. It's it's a four. Okay, we'll clear the deal. Alright.
Did you think we all had already changed the time to?
He thought it was at four thirty, so he's on his way.
Oh.
Oh my.
How about you? I had fifteen people ask me about your podcast.
Okay. Whenever you're ready, Adam.
Alright, call them in order, roll call.
Commissioner Nina Forsythe.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioner Donnie Carter.
Here.
And Mayor Robert Flanagan and Commissioner Kevin Grove are both absent. Um council meeting is looking to be um a fairly light agenda. Um as discussed last month, um charter amendments fifty four and fifty five were advertised in the Cumberland Times News. And that ran on November twenty seventh. And so there will be a public hearing on those two charter amendments related to the election. Um one uh corrects a date on an inadvertent error on the year of the elections. And um and the other one is uh related to um just the procedural um matters pertaining to the election. So uh state law requires that you have a charter amendment, a separate charter amendment for each uh change that you enact. So therefore two resolutions. The state laws also change that you have to have a public hearing and advertised in advance uh before voting on the charter amendment. You'll vote on it, um assuming that it is a favorable vote to pass both charter amendments. Those charter amendments will be pace posted on the front door of City Hall. As will run for consecutive weeks in the Cumberland Times News and as long as it is not petitioned a referendum, it will go into effect forty days later. Um and then election season will be starting right at about that same time. Any questions on that? Okay, um second, um Deirdre from Frostburg First has requested an open container repeal for the cocoa crawl, which would be on January twentieth of twenty twenty four from ten A M. to five P M. So uh shop owners can offer hot chocolate or hot toddies or what have you. Any concerns about that?
No.
Okay. And then last, uh Commissioner Grove requested that the fire department be s presented with a special recognition at the meeting. Um a few of the uh firefighters o offered coverage in Baltimore City following the deaths of some Baltimore City firefighters. Um and they covered a station in Baltimore City so that the Baltimore City firefighters could have done the funeral. And Commissioner Grove wanted to recognize um that uh service that Frostburg Fire Department provided. So that's agreeable. That would be a special recognition at the council meeting. Okay, very good. Um the next item is just uh something to make you aware of. It is in reference to the Great Race. Um the Great Race is a mooter, a vehicle race. I think they have to be more than fifty years old. You have to pay a lot of money to participate. And you have to follow a paper map along a route and there's a bunch of rules. But if you're the first person to get from Kentucky to Maine, you win like a hundred, I don't know, you win a lot of money. Hundred and fifty thousand, I think, is the purse this year, but it costs thousands to participate. Um uh City of Cumberland was a host city to the Great Race a ten or a few more than ten years ago. Um they can't go to Cumberland this year because of Baltimore Street construction, et cetera. So they identified Frostburg as a stopping point. Frostburg, uh they need a accommodations for about five hundred people. And so um that translates into about three hundred hotel rooms, far more hotel rooms than the City of Frostburg can offer. So they're working to secure hotel rooms. Um what I understand is there's a financial commitment expected from each destination. And um the local car clubs are working to get donations to support that financial contribution. Um
Do you know how much of a financial?
It's somewhere between seven and ten thousand dollars. And uh so um what the city has offered to provide, uh this is gonna be on Monday, June twenty fourth in Frostburg. So what the city has agreed to provide is City Place for free for them to serve food out of. They would cycle through these five hundred people with a catered meal. Um they'd come because they're coming in 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 uh
Fucking waves.
Interval intervals, that's yeah. So they would kind of filter through to get their dinner in the same intervals. So City Place should be able to accommodate them over the few hours. And then also do the city would um obtain the road closure permit from State Highway 'cause they wanna park on Main Street from like five till nine P M. similar to what they do for the cruise in. Um they have some strict rules about like can't be in the same, like they can't do anything sponsored that's in the same place as alcohol and things like that. So um I guess City Place shows up as an ideal spot since uh there's not a bar there. So that's about as involved as um we've been in the conversations we've been. Um I just wanted to make you aware of it and answer any questions that you might have. Uh but so I I know that Facebook is starting to talk about this, so I wanted to give you the heads up that we at least knew about it as well and.
So the idea is that for seven to ten thousand dollars, the city gets um advertisement, basically. People know we exist.
Yeah. And without the city getting the bulk of the hotel motel tax revenue, that seemed like a very large ask that we did not commit to. And so the local car clubs are working to secure that funding instead.
What's the date for that?
Monday fourth.
Monday, June twenty four.
I'm gonna be gone on a bike ride.
I'll be recovering from the election. Any other questions?
Will we have any obligations for closing streets or anything like that or?
We'll actually do traffic. Yeah, it'll be police protection, traffic control, just like every other event, so. Or overtime, the free use of City Place and the the process of the road closure permit, but.
I just curious about the street department casting.
Yeah, that's that's all old hat to us at this point. So. Okay. Um and then lastly, not lastly, but close to last.
Hmm.
Um there the mayor had suggested that because of the abundance of activities and hustle and bustle in Frostburg on Thursday nights, that there would be consideration to move the council meeting and work session meeting to Tuesday nights. Um I got the sense that four o'clock is a good time for a work session on Tuesday nights. Um we I wanted to firm up a good time for council meeting on Tuesday nights.
Four o'clock's not a good time.
Yeah, just keep it rolling.
Though we will get complaints that people are still at work and uh that we're trying to do things in private so that people can have access to us. So I think for council meetings, we should consider something after work hours.
I see the point, but
They don't show up.
you look back when's the last time somebody showed up?
I know, but when they do want to show up, that's when the complaints will roll in.
Just stick with seven?
Five thirty, six, six fifteen.
I'd get earlier the better for everybody, I think. Even I mean even people getting off work, they could get here by five, five thirty.
That's a six.
I mean, I'm okay with five thirty or six.
Cumberland's, I think, is at six fifteen. You could do five forty five.
There we go.
Splitting the difference.
Yep. It it I mean honestly, you gotta look at what's gonna make it easier for our our staff too. I mean, is it easier for them just to stay or run home and and come back? I mean, I know most of them live right in the home place, but yeah.
What do you guys think?
That's what like seven's best for me. That way I can leave here, go to practice, do what I need to do at home, eat dinner and then come back at seven, but
I really don't care.
I can make any time work. I can do five forty five, that's fine with me.
Seven o'clock would be my least preferred. Sorry, hey now.
Ellen? If it's any time like before six, I wouldn't go home. I would just stay.
So earlier would be better. That way you wouldn't have to stay so long.
So late. Or make it late enough to make it worth going home.
Yeah, that's kinda where I'm at. I'd rather it be five or seven.
Do you wanna try five thirty?
Let's try five thirty.
Okay. And on a good night, you'd still be out by six thirty and have time to get dinner and all of that, so. Okay, um I'll make that very, we'll have to change the front door, everything to switch to Tuesday. Um that's a big deal, switching to Tuesday. But we will get it switched. Um I need to get that community center sign fixed.
I just noticed that.
Uh I've noted it. I just don't have a key to that sign door. So I don't even know where the letters are.
Stu has Joan Kirby on as city administrator.
Maybe he has the key.
To the key, is that it?
To that display board.
Oh.
Just take the whole thing down.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best option. Um okay, I'll make those announcements. Um then just as reminders, uh December twenty second, which is next Friday, and then dec is the Christmas Eve holiday observed for City Hall. Um police department will still be working, obviously, and the street department will come out if need be. Um Monday, December twenty fifth for Christmas, January first for New Year's Day. That is all I have. If there's council has any discussion items that they would um like to bring forth, or staff have anything.
Plow truck. And we talked about that.
We did. I lost track of that. One of the um one of the um things. One one of the thoughts we had um with ARPA money, city money, um was the idea of using city money um to pay for the acquisition of the properties for mechanic street parking lot. Because that um didn't uh they were all rental properties, but it didn't put the city under the scrutiny of some of the federal regulations recor regarding acquisition. So so the city used city money um to purchase those properties with the thought that then ARPA money could be used to purchase a plow truck. That is showing up on the ARPA priority list, which I don't have with me tonight. Um and we haven't committed those funds for a plow truck. There's a few outstanding, there's a few projects that are in the design phase that haven't been put out to bid. So there's like a little, I guess squeamishness on my part of where those bids are gonna come in and how much play we're going to have. But a plow truck is really a non-negotiable. Um and so Adam would like to, Shane had gotten state bid plow truck prices for a international, I believe,
Yes.
through Maryland Industrial Truck.
Right.
State bid price. So it's I think probably about a forty thousand dollar savings at least over just buying a plow truck off the street. And we're getting like the better engine and everything for our terrain um on that state bid price. So um it's probably prudent to order it sooner rather than later. Um to have it for next plow season, I some of our plow trucks have some serious age on them.
Yeah, I wonder, I know you have an oh six, a seventeen. Is there an oh one there too?
No, not that old, but we've already had breakdowns on two of them so far this year.
No.
We're not
For one storm.
We're and we're on in terms of the roundabout project, um that's not gonna be out to bid. At the very earliest, it would be out to bid in February. The parking lot project should be out to bid. It could conceivably be out to bid and back in um by January or February. If you wanted to wait till then to see how everything worked out, um or if you is your preference to just go ahead and order it now. I think it's about a twelve monthly time.
Oh.
Yeah. Personally, I would rather order it now, but.
So we got yeah, I hate to wait. Well, let's 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 go through January and see if we get at least
Okay.
part of it done, you know, the bidding done and then.
Okay. Okay, I'll push to get the parking lot out to bid tomorrow. Not I mean not out to bid tomorrow, but make the call.
Okay.
We've been, there's been a communication issue on between two different designers. Waiting to find something and I'm just gonna pull the trigger that we'll just put it out to bid and then.
So let's let's try, yeah, let's shoot for next council meeting to, yeah.
Okay, January. Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, I lost track of that, Adam.
Is the January council meeting funky because of pace?
No, 'cause it's on a Tuesday now.
Oh, sweet.
Solves so many issues.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be um Tuesday, January sixteenth would be the next council meeting after next week. Okay, anything else?
I just had one quick one. Um Nick and I were at a traffic and transit advisory meeting yesterday and the state police officer who runs the weigh station on sixty eight informed us that he had heard in the works. Now granted, no one else at this meeting had heard this, so for what that's worth. But this state trooper, who is fairly high ranking, um told us that he was informed that there was a piece of legislation that was being proposed and talked about to remove all of the signage and restrictions on forty Main Street for trucks.
Really?
Coming down Main Street. Now, State Highway had not heard about this. The other state troopers had not heard about this. This is just one guy, but this is also the guy who deals with all the trucks. So um if you hear this, if it comes up, if you talk to anybody from different legislatures, please emphasize the fact that we do not want that.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Yeah.
That would be disastrous. I mean
Main Street burning down, you know.
Picture, I mean, we work very well with Bill Miller Equipment and I think we would keep that relationship, but they get deliveries from outside drivers. And picture a a Caterpillar triple seven on the back of a truck coming down Main Street, two hundred thousand pounds taking up both lanes. You know, I think that would be
And its brakes burning out.
Yeah. So if if this might be nothing, like you said, no one else knew about this, but if in the instance it comes up, I would fight it tooth and nail, so.
Um this is something we can ask your new lobbyist, Rich Reinhardt, to look into, so. He's he's already been working with me closely on a few things, including the meeting with the delegation last week that the mayor and him attended, so. Yeah, so he's a he's a busy person. He works at a quick speed, so I can definitely. Nick and I had heard this as well.
Oh, really?
Not from the state trooper, but someone else, so.
Yeah, yesterday was the first verification that there was anything really going on that we've had from another source. I think we still have to investigate what the facts are exactly, but the that state trooper did say that this retired trooper that testifies in bills had told him that some of this was going on. So we need to find out what the facts are really, what this is, but that was his understanding of what Hayden explained.
Could be some truck trucking company trying to get some traction on that.
It seemed like a lot of it stemmed from the concrete plant with Jody. Now, whether it's Jody asking for it or not, we also don't know. It could have just been people speculating on the fact that, oh, there's a concrete plant there now. Maybe we should remove that restriction. So we we have, like I said, we have no idea of all the details. We're just putting that out there for everybody.
And it's it's a from what Nick and I have come to understand and Hayden, like the concrete truck drivers at Frostburg Concrete, No Frostburg, they drive these roads every day. The truck that came flying down Main Street and somehow avoided any large catastrophe other than a smashed car and some other minor incident in incidental things was from out of town. I don't think anyone here at this table has an issue with those concrete trucks from Frostburg Concrete coming through town because they're in a low gear. They know they need to be in a low gear. They know exactly the layout of the road. It's their drivers are driving down Main Street, but if you remove the restriction entirely, everyone
We're gonna get people from sixty eight.
Everyone's gonna go use that route because they can avoid the scale house that way. So like that's the that's the, as a truck driver, if you can avoid a scale colla scale house and avoid your vehicle being inspected and maybe getting it red tagged or whatever they call it, there's
And a time delay.
Yeah, there's a big incentive to avoid that. And then, you know, you have, I mean, how many accidents do you see on sixty eight because people are unfamiliar with the roads?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And then, I mean, it's 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 hard to believe that this would actually get any legs anywhere just because of the risk to Main Street, but that's my perspective at least.
We did check before, about a week or so ago, one business owner had heard something about this. We checked into it, State Highway knew nothing about it. The engineer down there, he checked with the guy who does the uh the truck work essentially. He didn't know anything about it. And when it came up at the meeting from the trooper at the scale house, nobody from any of the entities, the county, it's really all out of the city, but it affects our city, but the county, State Highway, nobody knew anything about this, so. Just kind of limited information right now. Could it have been somebody that went right to one of our delegation, you know, when
Could they?
We have to look at that. So maybe we need to reach out to them.
Like I said, and like Elizabeth said too, all the truck, all the local truck traffic, I have full faith that we can work with them on anything. Concrete plant, Bill Miller Equipment, the mine.
But they can't they can't enforce it that way.
I know. I'm just saying, I I I like the fact that we can talk to all of our local people, but it's the people coming from sixty eight who don't know. That would be the problem.
That's the issue. So it's that's that's the issue is it's the state trooper cannot enforce it.
Yeah.
Selectively.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's all or nothing.
Yeah.
And after the tractor trailer came barreling down Main Street incident, they did change something, like we, um Nick and Kevin and the mayor
Yes.
and I had very, you know, there were several discussions, meetings about changing the signage, changing the restrictions, um making them consistent, making them clear, because there was what were some mm inconsistencies between like the weight restrictions and stuff prior to that.
Yeah.
Oh.
So um that all, I mean, that was a recent project that they just updated all the signage regarding that weight restriction
Yeah. Yeah, that was great.
within the last, what, three year, two to three years, so. But then the concrete plant came in after that. So. Now, if the restriction was removed from a concrete plant to, you know, Main Street, I don't know that, or not Main Street, the concrete plant to thirty six, I don't know that anyone would care about that, but I don't know if they can do it that way. So. Hmm. Anything else? All right, um with that, I've asked someone to read the closing statement and make a motion in a second to adjourn to closed session.
Under the annotated code of Maryland Article Section three dash three oh five B one, a closed session may be held to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. A closed session is needed to review specific individual personnel actions related to staffing and salaries.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.